All right, we are calling this meeting to order. Vice Mayor? Oh, no, wait. This is out of order. Are we doing flag salute? Yeah, Vice Mayor.
Please stand for the flag salute and please remain standing for the invocation. Thank you.
Right. Para traducción en español, escanea el código en la última página de la agenda. Rock Hall, please. Councilmember Uribe.
Here.
Councilmember Pimenta.
Here.
Councilmember Call.
Here.
Vice Mayor Fosse.
Here.
Mayor Hernandez. Here. So, item 7.6 is going to be continued to a future meeting. And for today's public comment portion, we're going to have 20 minutes allocated for public comment. As we do with any topic of interest, and today is the tiny home project on the corner of Moore Island, Oakdale. We encourage all members of the public to share their thoughts and concerns regarding this topic regardless. To ensure we can accommodate as many people as possible, we're going to implement a time limit of two minutes per speaker to try and get as many folks in here as possible. Please be mindful of the time. We will be adhering to it strictly. And we will do our best to ensure everyone has a chance to speak. Any conflicts of interest at this time, any council authority member who has a direct conflict of interest on a scheduled agenda item to be declared at this time.
I have a conflict of interest with item 14.1 due to a personal relationship with the claimant.
And presentation. So we have a few presentations today. And first, I would love to welcome Edward "Fast Eddie" Jones up. There it goes. When was your birthday?
April 3, 1930.
April 3. So. So we have a special recognition for you in honor of your remarkable 95th birthday. Is that correct? This certificate is awarded you for a lifetime of dedication, perseverance, and excellence. Your unwavering spirit, kindness, and positive impact you've had on everyone around you is truly inspiring. On this milestone birthday, we celebrate not only your years, but the incredible legacy you have built over them. May your days continue to be filled with health, joy, and the admiration of those fortunate to know you. And it's signed here today by me and the rest of the council. Would you like to share anything with us right now? Here you go. We were all just talking about the stories that you must have.
Oh, my God. But can I, can I face everybody? I appreciate this. I'm not going to cry because this, this could happen. But I appreciate this. The city council, you rascals, this was nice. This is. I don't know what I, what am I going to do when I, when I become 100? Oh, Lord. But anyhow, I was thank you all for coming. That was real nice of you, really. And I, I don't know what else to say. Oh, if, if, you guys know where I live? I live, sorry. I live in a mobile home park. It's across the street from what used to be O'Brien's Market. And I'm cordially inviting everybody to come stroll through the parks here at the mobile home park at your freewheeler. Just come drive through and see what it's like. Because we have people that have parents, who have homes, and their kids are gone. So they both, they live in this big house, trying to take care of everything. They should sell the house and move into the trailer park, then I can, I can bowl with them. But all kids aside, you guys are cordially, you guys are invited anytime. You don't have to stop and talk to anybody. But if you see my trailer, it's got a figurine of a G.I. Hold the rifle and hold the flag. If you see it, just honk.
Let's go to the middle here. And we have, we're taking a photo with you.
Yeah, you need to be up there with them. Eddie, and you're gonna take your wife, Eddie. Have your wife.
I'll have them come around.
So while the photo is being taken, I'm going to read a little bit of Eddie's background. Fast Eddie was born in Waltham, Massachusetts, and later moved to San Francisco as a young boy. He enlisted in the U.S. Army and was stationed in Korea in January 1951, where he worked with generators before his honorable discharge in 1963. In 1969, he began working for Siponary Trucking, which brought him to Riverbank. Fast Eddie retired at the age of 74 and stayed active by repairing scooters. He now volunteers with American Veterans First and enjoys gardening in his spare time.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Oh, okay.
Is that okay?
Of course. Yes.
Don't be wondering how I got my name Fast Eddie. We have enough time.
You, you gotta make it fast though, Eddie, sorry. Keep it PG.
I got out of the service in 63. I got a job driving a tow truck for City Hall Garage in Monterey. Anyhow, I got another job, a few other jobs, driving tow trucks. And I started driving for Siponary. He had a group of trucks. And he had, he got a three-wheeler, and I would pull the 40 footer. And we're, we're going down, we go, yeah, high five. That's what we would travel. Anyhow, they get on the, on the, at that time, we all had little walkie-talkies. The old, the old times, if you remember that. Anyhow, I'm not saying I'm old, but anyhow. When we get ready to stop, the guys would ask, tell me, Eddie, we want to, we're going to stop at so-and-so place on I-5. The reason why they called me is because I'm way behind. I have more power. And for me to run with the rest of the group, I was lugging the engine, so I fall back. They said, well, we're going to stop over here and have some coffee. You see that? No. We're gonna, we're gonna stop over there and have some coffee. And he says, Eddie? And this guy says, oh, call him Fast Eddie. And that's, and then when they, they said that, well, then I, I come up with my heart, my powered engine. And I come past them all, go to the trucks, the rest area, and as, as they come in, I was waiting. That's how I got my name, is Fast Eddie. And it stuck. It stuck for me every, and people even tell me, hello, Eddie. I think that's my name. Some people, Mr. Speed, or something. Thank you.
Is Naomi Campbell here? Yes, okay, awesome. Thank you for being here. So we have a certificate of recognition for you. The city council and city of Riverbank hereby recognize and congratulate you for your hard work, determination, resilience, and overcoming obstacles to achieve success. This is for, to recognize you for the 2025 AXA, which stands for, do you remember? Principal AXA?
The Association of California School Administrators.
Yeah, so it's a statewide recognition and the San Salz County of Education for every student succeeding nominee. So congratulations on your scholarly, scholarly success. I really appreciate it. Do you want to share a little?
What, like, thank you?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I just say thank you, like my, my dad and my teachers at school. Helped me a lot, made getting through school easier. That's about it. I don't know what else to say.
No, I don't mind. Okay. And if anyone that would like to be in the photo as well, I'd like to invite you up. Is Vicki Holt here? So we all know, Vicki and you come to speak to us about all the programming that the library has. And we would like to recognize you for National Library Week. So I have a proclamation here on behalf of the city. Oh, yes. So Maria, go ahead.
I'm retiring next month.
We've been working together for almost 17 years. I'm going to miss it.
Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have served as trusted institutions for all members of the community, regardless of race, ethnicity, credibility, sexual orientation, gender identity, and socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are diverse and the, as the populations they serve. Whereas libraries adapt to ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote the sense of local connection, advancing understanding civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining libraries, supporters, and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now, therefore, be resolved that the city council and city of Riverbank proclaim National Library Week, April 6 to 12. During this week, encourage all residents to visit their library to explore the wealth of resources available. Signed by me today and the rest of our council. Thank you so much for all you do. Am I taking a photo with these? Sorry. The celebrations continue. It is the 30th anniversary of the San Salz Consolidated Fire Protection District. And so I would love for all of you to come up. All right. So whereas on this day, we gather to celebrate and honor the remarkable 30 years of service provided by San Salz Consolidated Fire Protection District to the city of Riverbank and surrounding communities, because I know you all work very collaboratively. Whereas since its establishment in 1995, San Salz Consolidated Fire has been at the forefront of safeguarding lives, protecting property, ensuring the safety and well-being of our citizens through their unwavering dedication and commitment to excellence. Whereas the men and women serving at San Salz Consolidated Fire have shown extraordinary dedication, working tirelessly to prevent, protect, and respond to emergencies while fostering community partnerships. Whereas the 30th anniversary of San Salz Consolidated Fire serves as a testament to the growth, progress, and resilience of this institution and your leadership. Now, therefore, I, Rachel Hernandez, Mayor of the city of Riverbank and the city council, do hereby acknowledge and commend the San Salz Consolidated Fire Protection District for exceptional 30 years of dedicated service. Signed by me today. And on behalf of the city council, thank you so much for all you do.
Council, audience, thank you for presenting us with this presentation. 30 years has been a long time for our district. And it started in 1994 with an idea of forming some smaller districts together and, and developing a partnership. And as you can see today, as we form our partnership, and we're in the city of Modesto Patch, it continues to grow and expand. So very excited for our district and, and the work that we do every day. And I'm very proud of the team I have built that are working with me. It's been great. I have a good board, have great battalions and great line staff. So, thank you.
Item 7.5, we have a presentation from Caltrans District 10.
I had my kit extracted yesterday, so I tried to be cohesive possible, but it may not sound right. My name's Daniel Ha. I'm one of the project managers at District 10. Caltrans is divided into 12 districts in other states, and District 10 covers San Luis County. And I have Erin with me. And she's a public information officer. So hard question goes to her and easy question goes to me. And so I'm going to talk about four projects today near the city of Riverbank. First one is the cross-road intersection control project. And second is install, upgrade TMS element. And third one is a riverbank to Oakdale payment anchor project. Number four is North County border base one construction projects. And the last one is, I'm just going to touch upon the rapid fashion beacon projects. So we identify each project by EA. If you notice, 1K840, that's the EA number that referred to this project. It's a cross, cross-road intersection control project. Stainless 108, four mile, we identify the range of the project by four mile. And it's between the 33.3 to 33.8. And it's at the state road 108 and crossroad avenue. This project is to signalize the intersection of state road 108 and cross, crossroad. And if you see the description, is that all eastbound approach will be comprised of one through lane and one dedicated right lane. On the crossroad, the westbound approach of state road 108 will be comprised of one through lane and one dedicated left lane. For the northbound approach, there will be one dedicated right, right turn lane and one dedicated left turn lane. And this, this is project, we, we call this as a safety improvement project. And it's a right, ready to list at January 17. It means that it's ready to go out for bidding. We expect this project to be constructed, start construction in somewhere 2025 this year. And the construction capital is about $3 million. And if you see the, this details, widening is going to be happening at the south side of the road. And this is the lane closure chart. So we, this is a part of the contract that we put in. So we are allowing the contract, the selected contract to close. It's, it's going to be reverse traffic control from eight to Uh, it's, it's gonna be a reverse traffic control from eight to six. And we're gonna be talking with the locals, city, uh, when this is gonna happen. And second one is a complete closure of the city. We, there's need for a complete closure at Crossroad and Topika Road. And, um, fourteen-day advance notification will be on, on the road. Uh, it's called Port of a CMSI. I don't know if you saw the, it's Port of a CMSI. And, uh, the contractor is only allowed eighty-five consecutive days for the full closures. And, and second chart, if you see it, um, um, there's a reverse. We are allowing contractor for reverse closure as well from eight to six.
Daniel, you're not expecting this project to be eighty-five consecutive days, correct?
Yeah, we're just allowing for eighty-five days, but, uh, it could be shorter.
Okay.
It depends on the contractor. You know, the contractor could be a big, a small company, you know.
Might take longer, right?
Might take longer. So we are allowing up to eighty-five days for consecutive closures. The project itself is, I believe, is a hundred twenty days. But we are allowing the consecutive closure for eighty-five days. And this is a detour plan, uh, or model information plan that we're preparing, uh, in case, uh, Topika or the crossroad is closing where diverting the traffic to H Street. As you can see. And this second project I'm gonna talk about is the TMS element projects. And, uh, the TMS element project, it, you see it, uh, is a throughout the location, uh, different locations. And it's about forty-nine location along the Interstate five. State Route thirty-three, uh, ninety-nine, one oh eight, uh, one twenty, and one thirty-two in, in the sidewalking and stainless counties. And it's comprised of CCTV, camera, weather information system, uh, CMSI, and BBS, which means, uh, vehicle detection system, uh, or the roof detectors, and ma- maintenance vehicle pullout. And contract was awarded, um, in, uh, February twenty-sixth. So this project will probably go into construction somewhere this year. So, uh, throughout, you see the, uh, map, um, there's so many locations, ninety-four locations that I just talked about. But only location that I, I believe is, uh, impacting is location twelve, the first avenue, uh, first street, the Riverbank. And we're proposing a, uh, new vehicle detection system and camera at that location. And this is the, at the, uh, first street. Uh, so as you can see, we're installing the, uh, roof detectors on the both side of the road and also the camera. The third project is of, uh, Riverbank to Oakdale payment anchor projects between the Coffee Road and Willow Wood Drive. It's basically where, uh, uh, taking out the top layer of AC and just overlaying it. And installing cross to bike lane, sidewalk, crosswalk, and curbs. And also we have rotating curvers. We place all the sign, insert new traffic census station, and upgrade replace a traffic signal. And right, this program will be programmed as two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, meaning that it's not, it has not been, uh, programmed yet. So we're, we're, we're gonna be programming this year and start the project, uh, in, uh, two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year, uh, probably, uh, August of that year. Um, and we are expecting this project to be a five-year project because the, there's a lot of, uh, um, property that we have to acquire for construct the sidewalk. So delivery year is about, uh, fiscal year thirty-one, thirty-two. It's a long way to go, but, uh, it's in the works. Construction cap is four point six million dollar. Uh, total cost is fifty-two million. Uh, it's under the payment preservation program. And, um, be- because the, uh, it takes about thirty months for the environment document and twenty-four months for right-of-way condition. That's why it's five-year program instead of a normal four-year program. And the final environment document expect to be a C, I S E, uh, anticipated in January twenty-nine. And right away, need is being evaluated currently. So, uh, this is just at the, uh, intersection of Patterson and one oh eight. And this is how it's gonna be. Uh, it's not finalized, it's still in the works, but, uh, we're trying to improve this intersection. Because there maintenance force, there's some, some operational problems. So we're trying to improve that intersection. And the final, uh, fourth project I'm gonna talk about is the North County, uh, Corridor Phase Project. Actually, I got this map from the, uh, website, northcountycorridorphaseone.com. And this is what they are proposing. Uh, this is actually a county project, uh, uh, we're just oversigning this project. And includes, uh, full lane access control expressway, uh, new interchange, uh, Rose, Roseville Avenue, gray separated structure over the Burlington, Burlington, uh, Northern Santa Fe Railroad Line, uh, Terminal Avenue, and, uh, Modesto Irrigation District, Main Canal, and New Frontage Road to maintain access to adjacent property. And, um, I understand this project is awarded already in February twenty-fifth and anticipate start construction late May. I went to the website and there's a lot of more information. So if you wanna find out about this information, I suggest to go to the website and find the information. And this is the, um, project in work, meaning that it has not been, um, started yet, but we're looking into it. And it's gonna be a, uh, proactive project, not a reactive project, meaning that, um, usually the project started when something happened, but we're trying to, uh, be, uh, proactive by doing a project earlier than later. So, so we're, we're looking into it, but we, this project has not been started. Is to, we're proposing, um, rapid, rapid press, flashing beacon at Seventh Avenue, not the Seventh, any Seventh Street, sorry.
Thank you very much. Um, are there council comments or questions?
I only got one kind of question, so thi- this would be kind of the first time. If it does, uh, transpire that way, when the North County Corridor completes, does Caltrans have a transition plan from one oh eight to North County Corridor? I don't know what you can share as far as that. And i- if so, like, what can you share with us? As me being a council member, I've never seen that happen directly. So just kind of curious, what should we expect?
Uh, that, um, I don't know about, but I'm gonna take that question with me and then, um, address later.
Thank you.
Um, one of the reasons that, one of the reasons that prompted, uh, our request for you to come was a, uh, a project going on on Patterson Road with Tractor Supply. Do you have any updates on where that work is going?
Yeah, I started, uh, what I heard is that it started, um, to, what, what was proposed is to channelizer. But, uh, traffic safety went back and, um, you know, they did analysis and, uh, had a fair budget, and they don't, do not think channelizer would be a good solution. So they are, um, traffic, our traffic safety department, um, is talking to the city manager, I believe, of getting a good solution, uh, for that section of the road, yeah.
Any other council comments or questions? All right. Thank you very much. So we have public comment at this time. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council honorary board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes or, as stated by the presiding officer, in time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. Uh, in-person comments, please make sure, I'm sure you're already doing, fill out a comment card and turn it into the city clerk here at the corner. Um, and then we're gonna begin with comments not related to the tiny home project at this time. Uh, and, uh, again, these ones will be limited to three minutes. And afterwards, we're gonna allow for public comments on tiny home project. We do have, um, all the written comments that were submitted up until five o'clock PM today with us. All of us have a copy of them. Um, to maintain order and clarity, please address your comments to the city council and re- please refrain from using foul language, personal attacks, or interruptions. Um, yeah, and all of us have comments copied, so.
I just need to clarify one comment card. Ms. Lisa Porter, Potter, Potter, um, you just wrote, uh, comment for topic eight. What is your comment regarding? The, how's it? Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Okay, no problem.
So we'll start with general public comment, Sammy Martinez.
Hi, good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak today. Um, I am here on behalf of the Love Riverbank nonprofit organization. I, along with Pastor Randy and several of our Love Riverbank community members who are here today, are happy to bring to you this year our annual citywide volunteer day that is scheduled for April twenty-sixth. Um, we have several different projects that are available for anyone to sign up for. We have, um, anywhere from cleaning up the river to our alleyways to, um, Jacob Myers Park. We'll also be planting flowers and trees. And we also have a couple of different donations that we'll be running. So we will be working with the Oakdale Animal Shelter, as well as the Astro Foundation, to collect pet and food supplies that we'll be donating to them. Um, we will also be running a little free library book donation drive because I noticed that a lot of our little libraries are kind of empty and sad-looking. Um, so we would love for you guys to come out. The best way to get involved would be to go to our website at loveliverbank.com. Um, you can pre-register there. We highly recommend that you pre-register there because the morning of, it'll make it a lot smoother for all of us. So again, if you guys have any questions, please reach out to us and we'll be happy to answer them. Thanks, guys.
Karen Conrada.
My name is Karen Conrada. I live on Hoag Road. Good evening, Mayor Hernandez and Vice Mayor Cindy Fassi and city council members as well as staff. Here I am to say again that I oppose the Riverwalk project, proposed Riverwalk project. And tonight, I wanted to repeat a concept that I mentioned years ago at the beginning of finding out about the proposed Riverwalk project. And I feel it is as valid now as it was then, that the developers were aware this was a costly project would, um, be met with legitimate concerns and opposition. I pointed out that there could be pressure to consider this project based on the time and money the developers put into it. I cautioned that it is human nature to try to be fair, at least for most of us. And I was concerned that board members could be unconsciously swayed by the amount of money being placed into the development of the proposed Riverwalk. The point I want to make is that the developers were aware that this project was a big risk, that they chose to continue, choose to continue to spend money on it, and it is their responsibility alone for the money they invest. I don't believe anyone else entices them to continue instead of gracefully bowing out as the substantial reasons against the project continue to accumulate. I repeat again, our request, excuse me, that all city board members, um, the planning commission, commissioners, continue as you have been to read agency and private citizen reports and all pertinent information for making an informed decision. Thank you very much for your time.
Olivia Ramble.
Good evening, Mayor Hernandez, vice mayor, council members, and all of our audience here for attending. My name is Olivia Ramble. I am broker-owner of Timeless Real Estate, and I am also your Riverbank Chamber of Commerce Director of Community Events. Today, I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to share the upcoming events that we have going on. And we do have the, uh, the cohort, it's a six-week-long cohort that, um, is brought to you by and partnered with for the, um, San Salz Equity Partners. We have six sessions. We are at session number two now, which is gonna be here, uh, Wednesday the ninth. It's gonna be located at the Collective Space on Santa Fe. We're gonna have it there that day. Um, we had a big overwhelming amount of people sign up, so we've had to move some of the, um, the venues around. After that event on the ninth, we'll be back here in the city council chamber. It's from five-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. And it's gonna go over, um, becoming a business owner, if you already are a business, entrepreneur, marketing, finances, business planning, has, there's a lot of information. So, uh, for more information about that and anything else I share tonight, you can look at the Riverbank Chamber of Commerce for more information. Um, also, we have, uh, Daryl from Snow White is gonna be having a thirtieth anniversary, um, ribbon cutting on April twenty-ninth. The ribbon cutting, we'd like to invite council to come to that and the public, please. It's gonna be at five-thirty PM, but he's gonna have events going on all day. So please take part in that. He's gonna have food, so come see him. And then also, um, actually, to add on to our cohort, it being a six-week-long series, the last day is May seventh, which, um, all the, after we have the collective space on this weekend, or this week on Wednesday, after we have the event there, um, the other three after that are gonna be located here. But then the sixth one is gonna be at, back at the collective space where we have, um, a little graduation. And it just so happens to be that it's our Riverbank, um, host night for the multi-chamber mixer. So we're gonna have that there, five-thirty to seven-thirty, do a quick ten-to-fifteen-minute graduation and then celebrate. And that event night is under, um, the marketing category. So they'll be learning to market. And then the big thing we have coming up, um, April nineteenth, from ten AM to three PM, we have our Riverbank Easter egg hunt and vendor fairs, community event. It's free to the public. We have a bunch of vendors there, craft vendors, food trucks, um, food vendors, the Easter bunny, three Easter egg hunts. Um, for more times, look at our website for the times. Um, and then we have April sixteenth, we have a lunch and learn. Dignity, one of our members, is going to have a lunch and learn on planning for afterlife plans. Um, that's twelve to one PM. That's gonna be at Pizza Plus. And May third, we are partnering with the Modesto Chamber. It's gonna be multi, um, Modesto Chamber Market Day, and that's gonna be at the Center Plaza in Modesto. So, um, I think that's it for now. Thank you.
That is all that I have for public comment cards in the chamber. Um, I don't see anyone on Zoom raising their hand for general public comment. Um, but we did, oh, but we did receive one written comment for general public comments, um, for Mr. Gary Pearson. Um, I will read that now and time it. City Council comments, wastewater treatment project for Mr. Gary Pearson. The significant cost projection of the hundred and twenty million is a very high cost for a tertiary treatment facility. This project will greatly increase fees to the Riverbank residents. With pending FEIR for Riverwalk project and the proposed sewer hookup, I caution the city council to look at the impact of additional fees. If Riverwalk were to proceed, it is the residents of Riverwalk that should bear the costs and not the entire City of Riverbank. With the uncertain, uncertainty of funding for the wastewater treatment project, securing grants from both federal and state is in this climate, frankly, is uncertain. The wastewater project still has to cross over the San Salz River. History proves that the crossover pipe has failed on several occasions. Question, what are the contingency plans if failure occurs? Engineers can design all kinds of things, but failure does occur. Hydraulic water pressure is a difficult thing to measure and test under varying conditions. City council and planning commission should see a breakout of the cost of the wastewater project, including value-added engineering options for the project. Regarding the Riverwa- Riverwalk project. It is funny how us farmers spend countless hours getting the land ready from this disking all the way to planting and then the harvest. We spend tens, hundreds, and millions of dollars to fuel, equip, and fix all kinds of stuff on the farm. We have to be ever-present on markets, business plans, human resource issues, immigration laws, rules and regulations like no other industry in California. We spend many hours praying for rain or sunshine instead of sleeping. We sweat like no other job will make you do. We work like no other job category in the US economy. We get yelled at, cussed out by people when we move our equipment, traveling down the road, and we spend many hours, weeks, and months, and years. traveling down the road, and we spend many hours, weeks, and months, and years wondering if it's worth it. The deer, coyotes, hogs, coons, gophers, bugs, diseases, along with the general public are just a few of the pests to contend with. Now, members of this city council, I ask, ask yourselves, why would you want to farm? The answers are all around you. California produces produces three hundred commodities that plate of food, flowers, milk, sitting in front of you, the clothes on your back, the shoes on your feet. And the last answer is the one that puzzles most people. It's the love of agriculture and the satisfaction of knowing we had done our part at the end of the day. The city council needs to weigh and check that farmland both now and in the future will be available to meet the needs of the Californians. Riverwalk is not a viable project for the lot for lots of reasons. Stay tuned. I am listening for the next response of the FEIR for Riverwalk. And that is all for general public comment. So we will um start the twenty minute timer for the tiny house project. Um, and then I will call the people in the chamber at first. Your time will be limited to two, two minutes per person. Rosalind Chandra.
Good evening. My name is Rosalind Chandra. I'm here to voice my opposition regarding the permanent supportive housing that's proposed to be built on Morel Road and Oakdale Drive. We are here tonight with a growing sense of unease. Over the past few months, concerns have circulated regarding the development of this project. This project's plan is to be built in our community. The concept of providing stable housing for the vulnerable population is one that deserves thoughtful, considerate, and compassionate discussion. However, the manner in which the information surrounding this project has been handled is deeply troubling. It has become apparent that the details and perhaps even the plan itself have been withheld from us, the community. The very people who will be directly impacted by this project are the very people that you, the city, have withheld information from. This lack of transparency breeds distrust. It fosters an environment where speculation, anxiety, and deep concerns have taken root. We, the community, deserve to be informed, especially regarding a project of this caliber being placed centrally in our community. Permanent supportive housing is a complex issue with both potential benefits and legitimate concerns. Withholding information not only disrespects our rights to know, but disrespects us as residents of citizens, us, the taxpayers of Riverbank, us, the voters of Riverbank. Where is our public hearing on this project? Where is our notification that we were that this was even on the agenda various times with no public notice? Where was our notification of the particular meeting where options were presented and all five city leaders voted yes on this project and location? But we, the public, had no knowledge or say regarding this development. Meanwhile, as you, the city leaders, are learning of our concerns and our oppositions, oppositions, all efforts are still underway to proceed. With filing of the project application, preparation to apply for the grant, transparency is essential in fostering trust and ensuring that any decision made reflect the needs and concerns of the entire Riverbank community, not just one or two specific communities. A demographic that includes, per twenty twenty four report of Stanislaus Care Point in Time homeless count, Riverbank had twenty-eight people experiencing homelessness. A very small portion was reported to be of families. There's a small percentage of homeless when compared to the rest of Stanislaus County, which clocked in a number of two thousand and fifty-two. Riverbank is fortunate not to have this caliber of crisis on its doorsteps. Per the report, most were seen with adult, man, thirty-five to forty-four. Many have been incarcerated, y'all.
It's your obligation to hear our concerns. Don't silence us.
Your comment online to us as well.
Mr. Udpo.
Uh, hello, uh, good evening. My name is Utbalin Amdar. I'm a physician, uh, living here in Riverbank. I'm also here to voice concerns regarding the tiny homes project. Um, while we recognize the need to address homelessness in our community, the proposed solution must be safe and sustainable. And unfortunately, this proposal raises some red flags. First is a location. Uh, placing this project potentially for individuals with complex issues like substance abuse and mental health challenges adjacent to our community sports complex and less than five minutes away from the elementary school creates an unacceptable risk. The area is a hub for our city's youth and young families. It's a place where children gather and play seven days a week. This is not about stigmatizing those in need. It's about responsible zoning and ensuring safe spaces for all residents and especially our kids. Second issue, we must scrutinize the capabilities of CVCR. While the intentions may be good, they have operated with deficits uh for the last few years. This project is not small. It requires significant financial oversight and financial controls. The question you have to ask is, does CVC have the proven track record of successfully managing projects of this magnitude? No, they don't. Is our city prepared for the long-term financial cost of this project? This will likely cost our city millions of dollars in the long term, even if we get the money. Um, a project like this is only successful if the support system is also good. Uh, do we know who CVCR's confirmed partners for these central services are? What are their track records? Have you guys done your due diligence? Have you sat down with them? From my understanding, none of this is public yet. Um, and then in conclusion, uh, let's find solutions. Um, but let's ensure that they're well-planned and ensure the safety of all Riverbank residents. Uh, I urge you to oppose this project as it stands now. Thank you.
Kathleen Heinzinger.
Good evening. I am Kathleen Heinzinger. My husband and I are happily new residents of the Parkwoods Community in Crossroads West. We have been impressed and pleased with all the activities and events in Riverback, Riverbank. I know where I live now. There has been much discussion regarding affordable housing in our neighborhood and at recent city council meetings. We support affordable housing, and we believe Riverbank must provide viable housing options for all of our residents. The project on Morel and Oakdale Roads needs to be given support and guidance so that it will meet the needed regulations and be successful. We hope the city council will be able to hear and respect all voices. Lastly, we sincerely thank the council members for all the time, effort, and patience involved in attending endless meetings and a huge number of events and listening to all of us express our valid varied views. Thank you very much.
Mary Chris.
Good evening, um, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Mary Chris, and I'm here to express my strong opposition to the proposed permanent housing on Oakdale and Morel Road area. As a concerned community member, I am deeply worried about the safety and well-being of our residents, especially our children. The community at Crosswoods has come together in opposition to this project. We've gathered over three hundred signatures on a petition calling for the project to be relocated to a more suitable area. Additionally, over twelve public comments were submitted for this meeting, yet due to time constraints, they were not read. This shows the depth of concern in our community, and it's critical that our voices are being heard. We've also conducted our own outreach efforts, distributing flyers, providing information on the, on a website, speaking with local residents outside of Save Mart to raise awareness and garner support. One major concern is the lack of education and outreach regarding this project. Since March eleventh meeting, CVCR has not held workshops or provided the updates that the council recommended. I reached out to all of you members for clarification, and some responses have left more questions, not to everyone. Um, I wanna preface that. Through my own research, I found that the Home Key Plus Grant is designed for populations such as veterans, the homeless, and with behavioral health challenges, including substance use. However, CVCR's main focus appears to be providing transitional housing for young adults aging out of foster care. This raises questions about whether this project aligns the goals with the grant and if this is the most appropriate fit for the area. Furthermore, CVCR's website is still under construction, and its Facebook page is primarily promotes fundraising events. While the organization was named as a nonprofit of the year in twenty twenty-four, there are concerns about potential maybe conflicts of interest because the previous council member in District Four is also the CEO, which now we have a new council member, Stacy Call. But the lack of accessible data of the outcomes of CVCR programs is another troubling issue. There's no information on the success rates of their transitional housing in Riverbank or Stanislaus County, making it difficult to assess the potential impact of this project. Without clear data, how can we trust that this initiative will benefit the community? Thank you.
Lisa Potter.
Good evening, city council mayor members. Um, my name is Lisa, and I'm here today to express my strong opposition to the proposed location of the tiny home project on the corner of Morel and Oakdale. I do not take this position lightly, but I have serious concerns about the nonprofit organization behind this initiative as well as the process by which it has been presented to the public. First and foremost, the organization leading this project has proven itself extremely unorganized. They have no track record or experience with managing whoops. With managing project of this size or complexity. In fact, they ran a deficit in four of the last five years, which calls to question their ability to handle such large-scale development that will undoubtedly require strong, strong financial oversight and accountability. This raises concerns about the long-term sustainability of the project and whether they will be able to fulfill their promises. Moreover, the nonprofit has requested waivers for a project that hasn't even begun. This is highly troubling. How can we trust an organization asking for special treatment when they haven't demonstrated compatibility to even get the project spent within budget? They haven't provided a solid plan, nor have they shown any track record for success with similar initiatives. One of the most frustrating aspects of this whole process is the lack of transparency and communication with public. Just past Saturday, a group of us went out to inform the public, and a lot, nine out of ten citizens were that we spoke to had no idea this was even being considered in their neighborhood. That's unacceptable. The nonprofit organization has clearly failed failed to rep responsibly to inform, engage with the public. It is our job. It is not our job as residents to be the ones doing the outreach for them. As a taxpayer, I'm deeply concerned and upset. And the thought of using the city funds balance funded by our tax dollars to support the project led by an organization that has failed to earn the trust of the community, we deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all for for uh public comment cards. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak on this subject? Okay, I'll read um some of the yeah, come on up.
Uh, mayor, vice mayor, council members, uh, well, drives uh woke a little bit late today. Can't believe I said that. There it is, graveyard shift. Um. I do wanna say at the end of day that there has been a project in LA similar to the world we're facing, and there's been a lot in the news that it's gone, it's gone bad. Crime, drugs, feces, trash, everything abandoned. The money that was provided to that place, funded, however it came through, eventually ran out. They ran out, got no more money. So from there, where are they gonna go next to? They're gonna go to the public. They're gonna go to their citizens. They're gonna charge your citizens more taxes on this. Also, there's certain reaches and regions in LA that are being taxed higher than other regions in LA. Most likely, they're in the same area that those housings, those permanent housings are in. Given the sense, this makes me believe that the reason why you guys wanna build there so badly is because those higher taxes are gonna fall down on us compared to the rest of Riverbank. At the end of day, also, what I wanna say again. I've been through a lot, I've seen a lot, and I'll say this one more time like I did last time. God forbid, in the morning, you guys wake up, and in the news, you hear of a certain incident, crime that happened in our community, the next community, certain area, this running area. And if you guys hear those bullshit in those God-forsaken incidents, that bullshit will be on your hands. Thank you guys for your time. Thank you, citizens of Riverbank. God bless America.
Could you give us your name for the record?
I'm so, I'm so sorry about that. Yes, Manuel, Manuel Rivera. Thank you.
So I have no one on Zoom wishing to speak on this uh subject. So I'll begin with the first written comment that we received from Mr. Diego Galvan.
Dear mayor and city council members, I am sorry I could not be here today in person, but I respectfully ask that my speech be read on my behalf. I am here to express my opposition to the proposed location of the tiny home project at the corner of Morel and Oakdale Road. This project goes directly against the Crossroads West specific plan of upscale shops and homes. I believe the city must be held accountable for the commitments made in that plan. My other main concern is safety. I grew up in a neighborhood that was once a nice new development, but over time, it became a much different place. The increase in homelessness, largely due to the nearby shelter and mental health clinic, caused the neighborhood to deteriorate rapidly. What was once a safe environment became unsafe with rising crime and widespread littering. I personally found drugs and used needles at the playground next to my former home. I also witnessed drug deals happening openly in the area. Additionally, I have serious concerns about the impact this project will have on the nearby sports complex where children play and families gather. The presence of the tiny home project in such close proximity could create safety hazards for those using the complex. Children and families should not have to worry about their safety while enjoying recreational activities. And I fear this project will compromise that sense of security. My best friend, who came from an at-risk home, lived with us on and off when we were kids. Despite our best efforts to help him and guide him in a better direction, he ultimately fell into a bad situation. This experience has shown me that real dangers that can arise when certain developments are placed in the wrong areas, and I worry that the same could happen in this case. I urge the council to reconsider the proposed location of this tiny home project, especially given its proximity to a place where children and families should feel safe. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration, Diego Galvan. Um, the next one is from Carrie Young.
Dear city council, I hope this message finds you well. My family recently moved to the new development in Riverbank with the primary concern being the safety of our children. We have a two-year-old and a five-year-old, and this was the driving factor in us choosing our new home. Previously, we lived in a Johansson area where we encountered numerous safety issues, including homelessness, shootings, and unsafe local park. Our old neighborhood, once peaceful and secure, became increasingly dangerous after the construction of a nearby homeless shelter and mental health institution. This made the area uninhabitable and unsafe for families. We chose to purchase a home in Riverbank, investing in a, investing a significant amount of money, believing, believing that we would be moving into a safe and thriving community for our children. The proposed new tiny home development, however, raised serious concerns. Not only will these homes likely devalue the properties we invested in, but over time, we fear that we may experience similar safety issues such as increased crime, shootings, and robberies that we faced in our previous neighborhood. I urge you to consider the long-term consequences of these developments for all of us here in Riverbank. The impact of this decision could significantly affect the safety and quality of life for the families who have invested hundreds of thousands in this community. Thank you for taking the time to consider my concerns. I look forward, forward to you considering not only mine, but the whole community's concerns. The next one is from Sal Galvan.
Hello, mayor and council members. My name is Sal. I am, I am present in the audience again today. However, I request that this time my statement be read on my behalf. I am writing to express my deep concern and opposition to the proposed tiny home project that is being considered for individuals with substance abuse and mental health concerns. While, while I understand the intention behind this project to provide support for those who need a second chance, I feel that it does not adequately consider the impact on the surrounding community, particularly those of us who live nearby and those who frequent the sports complex next door to the proposed location. This type of project does not suit the area and would stick out like a sore thumb. I speak from personal experience. I have lived in close proximity to similar projects and individuals with troubled paths, and I can say with certainty that the results were not positive for the residents or the surrounding community. I myself had to flee my home for safety after a shooting occurred right on my street. The trauma and fear that came with that experience have stayed with me, and I do not want that for my family to be exposed to such danger again. I have two younger granddaughters who are the light of my life, and I can, and I cannot in good conscience risk their safety and
conscience risk their safety and well-being. I ask that you consider the long-term effects of this project on the neighborhood and the residents who have already faced too much instability and fear. I understand the need for compassion and support for individuals with difficult paths, but I firmly believe that the placement of such a project should be thoroughly evaluated, ensuring that it is done in a way that does not put vulnerable families like mine at risk. There are other solutions and locations that have been approved for such housing that should be explored further, but for the safety of my family, I cannot support this project in its current form. Thank you for considering my concerns, and I trust that you will make them into take them into account when making your decision. The next one is from Eileen. Dear Council, my name is Eileen, and I am against the Tiny Home Project on Oakdale and Morel. As currently presented, as a healthcare worker with experience supporting individuals with mental health and substance abuse issues, I have serious concerns about the population to be served with this project and the potential impact on our community's safety and well-being. As a healthcare professional, we care deeply deeply about the individuals in need, but we must also consider the broader implications for the families and the residents of the neighborhood. While compassion and support are essential, it is equally important to ensure that the safety and mental health of the entire community are not compromised in this process. Everyone deserves to feel secure and protected in their environment. Furthermore, furthermore, we believe that simply providing immediate relief, such as food, healthcare, or housing, without addressing the root causes of poverty and mental health issues is not a sustainable solution. Long-term successes comes from empowering individuals by offering opportunities for self-sufficiency, providing job opportunities, skills training, and ongoing support systems that help people contribute meaningfully to society is far more empowering and lasting than temporarily relief. Also, what measures will be put in place to react to relapses? How will the mayor and council guarantee safety of the surrounding residents when such relapses occur? Does our law enforcement even know what's being presented and expected to be put on their plates? We don't even have the right infrastructure for this as we rely on MPD. So many questions must be asked, the main one being, can the mayor or those approving these projects truly guarantee the safety of our families and our communities? We as taxpayers are working multiple jobs, juggling long hours and contributing to society. Does our mental health and well-being not matter? Don't we deserve to have our concerns and priorities hurt too, especially when our tax dollars are being used to fund such initiatives? I believe that's all the time.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to be moving forward with the consent calendar. All items listed in the consent calendar to be acted upon by a single action by the City Council LRA Board unless requested by an individual, City Council Authority member or a member of the public for a special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation will be accepted. 9.1 Wave Readings, all readings except by title or wave. 9.2 Approval of the City Council and Local LRA Board Minutes from March 25, 2025. Item 9.3 Resolution to Approve a Final Map for the Countryside 3 Subdivision APN 622220. Item 9.4 Resolution to Approve the Memorandum of Understanding with San Slaus County to Host Library Operations at the Teen Center during the renovation of the Riverbank Public Library. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as stated.
Second. Roll call, please. Councilmember Ribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
New business, item 12-1. Approval of the Public Works Construction Standard Resolutions to Add and Update Per City of Riverbank Standards Specifications. Part 1 Resolution to Add New Standard Vertical Curb to Roll Over Curb Driveway Approach Drawing Number 333. Part 2 Resolution Update 2-Inch Water Service Standard Drawing Number 505 and add 2 New Standard Drawings 534 and 535. Part 3 Resolution to Update Catch Basin Drawing Number 702 Open Area Drain Drawing 706 Horizontal Drain Drawing 721 and add 2 New Standards. Part 4 Resolution to Add New Standards for Micro Trenching, Excavation, and Trench Paving Drawing Number 1008 through 1016. And Part 5 Resolution to Replace in Its Entirety City of Riverbank Standards Specifications.
Your Director of Public Works, Cody Bridgewater, will provide the staff report.
Mayor Hernandez, members of the City Council. So as the mayor alluded to, we have a few standards that need to be updated for our city construction projects throughout town. And these projects, sorry, these standards go for both the city performing work and developers and contractors performing work in the city right-of-way. So the city's current standard specifications were adopted by Resolution 2016-005, and we have eight sections. The preface, the safety, streets, lighting, water, wastewater, storm drains, parking, grading, utilities, and trash enclosure. The standards were developed to aid all persons engaged in construction of public works projects, and all construction work in the public right-of-way within the city shall conform to these standards. As the construction industry and design parameters change, revisions and additions to these standards need to be adopted. So Section 3 Streets, we added a new standard specification and drawing for vertical curb to roll over curb driveway approach. This would take place in a neighborhood that is consistently drive over curb, but we may have a drainage inlet like this picture here where you have to transition to vertical curb in order for the drain and drainage inlet to be encompassed by the sidewalk and then transition back to roll over curb. Section 5 on the water, updates the standard drawing specifications and the drawing for a 2-inch water service and adds a new standard for the abandonment of a water service saddle with an acceptable condition and a new standard of abandonment of a water service saddle with not acceptable condition. Section 7, which is storm drain, we're updating the catch basin drawing 702, the open area drain drawing 706, and horizontal drain drawing 721, and adding rock well and vertical drain drawing number 723, and rock well, vertical drain, core pipe drawing number 724. Section 10 is utilities and adds a new standard details for micro trenching, excavation, and trench paving and backfilling. And this is drawing number 1008 through 1016. In the photo there, you can see just along the black edge, you'll see what are called bell holes. This is pretty consistent with a lot of utilities that come in and perform work in the roadway. They will dig bell holes and bore underneath the street so that they don't have to trench and replace all the asphalt, but then it leaves this patchwork of new asphalt that is in our lovely paved roadways. So in order to mitigate this, we have a micro trenching detail now, which can do a trench up to two to three inches wide and just have a very narrow strip of new asphalt in the road. New paving requirements required for the bell holes and trenches and things of that nature. So trying to save our roads from these four-by-four bell holes that you would see all over town. And then the trash enclosure, Section 11, we would replace in its entirety the design standards and standard plans for Section 11 Trash Enclosure. And you can see these trash enclosures are roofed, screensized, so that individuals can't jump in and remove material from there. And then they have drains that go to the sewer, a hose bib, so that the individuals can actually wash out the area after the trash is dumped, making it a lot cleaner and more appealing for a trash enclosure, as appealing as you can get, I guess you could say. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from council? Comments? Any from the public?
We do have one for Sid Halterman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sid Halterman, resident here of the City of Riverbank. As most of you know, I'm also on the City's Planning Commission, and I own a civil engineering and land surveying firm in the area. We are the lead engineer on several projects that are ongoing in the City Bank, City of Riverbank right now. This item before you, this update to the city standards, it's it's great. I'm not here to speak in opposition to it or complain about it. I've actually had a chance to look at them when the report was issued last week. We look through them because we always want to know what standards we're going to need to design to on projects and that. So everything looks to be in order on these new ones. So I, you know, I think we're good to go on that. What I'm here tonight to do is say is I appreciate when a city updates their standards. As I was talking to some people, I'm doing a project in a city that has not updated their design standards since 1990, and it's ridiculous, the things that we see that their standards that they have to adhere to and we have to design to are outdated. You know, cities updating their standards to meet the changes in technology and in processes and in the industry is great to have happen in that. Sometimes mistakes come through. Recently, in a project that we were working on, we discovered that the city's design standard for the spacing of electricors, streetlights, was at 150 feet when previously it had been 300 feet, and a lot of concern came up with one of our developers because it doubled the number of streetlights they had to put in a subdivision. Streetlights are not inexpensive. The cost difference was a couple hundred thousand dollars that would be added to the cost to build and install it. If that's a necessary improvement, great, we'll do that. You know, we do that design. It seemed like this was a change that didn't follow what any of the other communities in the area were doing. There didn't seem to be a design change in the products that necessitated this. Fortunately, city staff in the building department, we spoke with them, and they said, yeah, we're not sure where this came from either. It turns out that it was a mistake that it entered in inadvertently, and thankfully to the staff, we got it sorted out, and everybody's happy. The developers are happy about this. We're happy because it's easier designing that. What I'm here just to say is that when these things come through, definitely I encourage it, again, the city needs to continue to upgrade their update their standards and that. Why would I would ask is that the city can either, whether it's by an appointment committee or volunteers or whatever, to make sure that these are properly vetted and reviewed. I know city staff does a great job. Sometimes these mistakes slip through and because you're in the middle of looking at them and putting them together, maybe you missed like this one, 150 feet instead of 300 feet for streetlights. So I would hope that maybe as we move forward, the city could potentially have, like I said, it's an ad hoc, whether it's a committee or a group of individuals, whether it's the public, whether it's within city staff, et cetera, to vet these things so that when they come out, all of the developers and all of us designers that work for the developers are confident moving forward with it and not run into these hiccups because sometimes it provides a little bit of heartache and a little bit of heartburn to the developers. And I definitely don't want to end up in a situation where we have developers that are choosing not to develop in our city because they think the design standards are unreasonable. You know, as I spoke with Cody earlier, the city's job is not to make it easier on the developers for sure. We want our design standards to meet what's necessary for health, safety, and what the industry is doing currently. But if we can avoid simple mistakes that might be better approached or caught before they become the standard, that would be great. And that's really all I'm here to ask for. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
That is all I have, Mayor.
Anything further at the council? Just to clarify, is it back to 300? Oh, that wasn't, I was like, wait, okay.
So Cody, I don't know if you want to kind of maybe address that concern with the current vetting and the processes for maybe this, like what that looks like here?
Currently, we have between contract staff and city staff, between six and eight individuals reviewing these as they come through. So yes, things do get overlooked sometimes, and that was an honest mistake on our part. You know, luckily, we had some engineers and developers that were kind enough to bring it to our attention.
Great. Is there a motion?
So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item 12.1.
Second. Roll call, please. Councilmember Ribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fosse?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Item 12.2 Resolution Accepting the 2024 Annual Progress Report on the Implementation of City of Riverbank's Housing Element, one of the elements of the City of Riverbank's 2005-2025 General Plan.
Michael Arroyo with JB Anderson Land Use Planning will provide this report.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. Again, Michael Arroyo, contract planner with the City of Riverbank, associate planner with JB Anderson Land Use Planning. Before you this evening is an annual annual report on the housing element implementation for the calendar year 2024. So for some background, the state of California has required local jurisdictions, both cities and counties, to adequately prepare and plan for housing for all individuals in their community, regardless of income level, category, or economic background. Local jurisdictions accomplish this, as I'm sure you're aware, by way of a certified and adopted housing element. They meet that requirement by that means. And in that effort, the cities are required, another requirement by the state, is to report the progress that's made on implementation of the housing element. With with that, this annual progress report is forwarded to these two state agencies. The first is the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, formerly the Office of Planning and Research, and the second is the California Department of Housing and Community Development. But before this annual progress report can be sent to these two state agencies, it must first be reported to the local legislative body, City Council. It's also important to note, though, that these two state agencies, there's no action or approval required from this report. It's essentially just a tool for reporting progress on the implementation of the housing element. So for some context, a decade ago or so, the city adopted or received notice that the fifth cycle housing element was certified by HCD, which essentially means that it's in substantial compliance with state law. Subsequently, in 2016, the fifth cycle housing element was adopted by City Council. So the fifth cycle, though, has concluded, and you all are most certainly aware of the city's efforts in updating the housing element of the general plan for the sixth cycle. Now, that is not completed, so regardless, the state requires, without an adopted certified housing element, for the city's local jurisdictions to report the progress on the implementation of the sixth cycle housing element. And the key metric for this, as you'll note at the at the bottom, is for tracking the Reno or the regional housing needs allocation that's assigned to the City of Riverbank is by way of building permits. So we'll look at that on this next slide. So this report, the annual progress report highlights is related to building permits issued and completed. So here we see in 2024, 202 building permits for new dwelling, new dwelling units issued were 202, so that breaks down to 194 building permits for single-family dwellings and eight permits for accessory dwelling units. Now that's issued. 228 building permits for new dwellings were completed, and you see the breakdown there, a couple building permits for accessory dwelling units. There were 19 building permits completed for attached single-family dwelling units. And then finally, 270, 207, excuse me, building permits were completed for single-family detached units. So as as far as development applications, the city received one general plan amendment, the Heritage 2 application, which also included a rezone and an architecture review. That's located at Claus Road, 6509, and City Council last year reviewed and approved this project. On the right column, you see that this project alone approved 47, excuse me, 47 dwelling units, and that's reported in this annual progress report. Subsequently, the city received four applications for architecture and site plan reviews, which were, excuse me, one was approved by the planning commission while the the three remaining are still in progress. And so here we have a picture of a form provided by HCD Housing and Community Development Department. On the the blue row at the top illustrates the planning period for the sixth cycle, 2024 to 2031. And the left column, the green column on the left, shows that allocation by income categories as it relates to the assigned units for the City of Riverbank. A total regional housing needs allocation. A total, uh, regional housing needs allocation, number of units, just under thirty six hundred at three thousand five hundred ninety one units. If you span over to the right column, that also green column. Um, it shows the remaining units across all income categories. So you can see that, uh, a total of three hundred and twelve units, um, today, to date, excuse me, have been reported, completed or issued. Um, it's important to note, however, that when this item was presented to the planning commission. It was noted that in the staff report, there was, um, erroneous figures reported. And that was brought up at the planning commission reported. That was since before city council, um, the staff report. It was addressed by way of scrutinizing the building permits issued because it was a low figure. And so we, we went through the analysis of the data that was, um, per, excuse me, produced by the unit, muni permit system. And rectified. So that two hundred and two total units is the correct, uh, figure by way of scrutinizing the permits issued.
Michael, quick question, if you can back up just, just briefly, uh, the column for twenty twenty three?
Yep.
Follow it down, there's no numbers there for units. Projection period has the units, are those numbers supposed to be in the twenty twenty three column showing units for twenty twenty three? Or is projection period something completely different that I don't?
Yeah. So the twenty twenty three year is kind of broken up in the fifth cycle and the sixth cycle. So from that projection period, I think it's June thirtieth to December thirtieth. That is the units that were permits were issued for that period of twenty twenty three. So if you look at the fifth cycle housing element that is online for the city. Those units were permitted in that period. And also, excuse me, the, the fifth cycle runs up to June twenty nine, twenty twenty three.
Okay.
And thus those units are counted in the sixth cycle.
Got it.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
All right. Sorry about that. Should have mentioned that. And so as it relates to the California Environmental Quality Act, this is not considered a project. Thus there was no environmental review or an analysis for this annual progress report. And so finally, staff recommends that you city council adopt a resolution. Accepting the twenty twenty four housing element annual progress report. And also authorize staff to transmit this annual progress report to the two state agencies, uh, described previously. And so with that, uh, my presentation is concluded. And if you have any questions, I'm available to answer those questions.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council?
Ju- just one briefly, S B, S B six and kind of like the mandates that they're, that they're gonna be placing or are in place already. What have you seen, uh, as far as S B six, like the mandates for relocation assistance for eligible commercial tenants? Have you seen how other cities are handling that? I know we're, that's not something we're dealing with just yet, but have, have you?
To, to be perfectly transparent, I work in a number of agencies in Stanislaus County, San Joaquin County. And we haven't seen really any use of that S B six.
Okay.
For commercial relocation period.
Okay. I'm curious too, because I haven't seen it and I'm kind of curious what other cities, if they are, you know, the bigger cities, maybe they are experiencing some of this. And just kind of curious how they were handling that.
Yeah, we, we work in Lathrep, um, Mountain House. So those are primarily the ones in San Joaquin County. And we haven't seen any of those projects come before.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Thank you, Michael.
Well, if not, is there any public comments or questions? Great. I'll bring it back for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve item twelve point two.
And I'll second it.
Recall please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Pimentel?
Yes.
Councilmember Call?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fossey?
Yes.
Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Comments on reports, city manager?
No comments from staff today.
Right. Vice Mayor?
You, um, the Riverbank Historical Society is having their next meeting on April fourteenth at five o'clock at the, um, museum behind us. April fifteenth is the Women's Federated Group, Riverbank Federated Women's Group, um, at Scout Hall at, uh, six thirty. And then May eighteenth, um, from nine to one, both of us, the Historical Society and the Women's Group are, uh, having our after Mother's Day pancake breakfast. It'll be at the community center from nine to one. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Uribe?
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, so yesterday I had an opportunity to, to attend, uh, the restart classes over at Sierra House. Uh, and so I got to sit there with, uh, David, John and Sebastian, who were going to be graduating. Uh, and if you're not aware, um, we have three graduates, uh, from Sierra House and we're going to be recognizing them on, uh, April twenty second. Uh, three, three, four, four Sierra Street at two o'clock. Uh, they're calling it achievement. We're calling it graduation. It's going to be, it's going to be something to celebrate. Um, got to see firsthand Seth kind of handling, uh, i- his role there and, uh, the professionalism that, that he's kind of showing. Um, we got to dive into perception, perspective, uh, conflict. So it's a very, it was a very informative class. I was very impressed with that. Uh, looking forward to, uh, opportunity to Stanislaus, uh, recognizing the city of Riverbank at the celebrate the Central Valley event, uh, at Dust Bowl. Um, looking forward to that. That's going to be on the, I believe, the seventeenth of this month. Uh, and then for residents, if you are looking for volunteer opportunities, um, as Sammy said earlier, uh, love Riverbank. Reach out to Sammy, reach out to Randy. They're, they're leading this whole thing. They're doing, they're doing amazing. Uh, the river cleanup does need a lot of volunteers. Please join me out there. Um, you, you're not going to actually get in the, in the river. You're going to be on the embankment, just kind of cleaning up there. Uh, and the cool thing about it, about it this time around, um, we are teaming up with the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, they're going to have a boat out there. Sounds kind of weird, but we're going to actually load all of the stuff we don't want next to the river onto this boat. We're going to float it down to Jacob Myers Park and then we're going to offload it there into the, into the, into the bins that Jilton has provided for us. So Jilton, thank you for that. Uh, another opportunity for volunteers, uh, Sister Cities is going to be meeting this Friday. Uh, we're just, uh, heavily engaged. We're trying to get, uh, trying to impact our youth. Uh, we're doing, trying to send them out to either leadership summits, uh, send them to the capital. We're trying to do scholarships. So if you guys are interested in volunteering, just being active, helping the youth, uh, hit us up, reach out to me, reach out to John. Uh, meetings this Friday, uh, six o'clock. Thank you.
Councilmember Pimentel?
I, I attended the Chamber of Commerce dinner on March twenty eighth. Thank you, Olivia. It was really nice. And, uh, along with myself and the C P T youth, we were going to be helping with the Easter egg hunt. I believe it's April nineteenth. That's the correct date. And on Monday, uh, met with Vice Mayor Fossey, Darlene Barbara Martinez and some of the, the others. That had questions about what was coming up with, uh, public concern. So we were able to meet and we are educating ourselves on that and we're not taking anything lightly. Uh, I've received several calls and we are answering to the best of our ability, but we're not rushing. We are taking our time. So thank you for your concerns. And, um, like they're saying, love Riverbank is coming up. So if you need help with, uh, signing up, a lot of the older people are not able to go on the computer. So I'm able to help them, reach out to me, uh, Facebook, John C. Pimentel. And I'll do my best to help you and that's all I have.
You, Councilmember Call?
Um, April first was a, was a Syrian New Year. Um, so I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the centuries of, uh, cultural influence in the Central Valley. Um, and I found it appropriate to remind everyone of their presence and success in our community. Uh, state of the city, uh, my key takeaways were to get involved, ask questions and take part in the community. Uh, business and city leader intersections. Um, it was stated that Crossroads West is a project of patience and quality. Um, which is a preference to the meetings that I've been having with different departments, law enforcement and C B C R. To discuss the tiny home project in depth, uh, within the Crossroads West specific plan is where that falls. Um, so it's becoming more and more apparent, uh, that this project is not a patience, of patience and quality. Um, project resolve orientation workshop with the mayor. Uh, continued our conversations on how to reach messengers in the communities with the distrust in law enforcement. Um, and bringing them into the space of project resolve, uh, so that they can hear it, see it and feel the work that we're doing, uh, to bridge that gap. Yesterday I had the opportunity to speak at the Republican Central Committee. Um, it was a space to introduce myself to my constituents and colleagues in depth and hear about bills coming through in California. Um, and I was able to meet, uh, Jeremy Young. Uh, and then today I was with, uh, council member Uribe. And we met with Sheriff Dircksey, uh, to go over the proposed dispatch system, um, as well as ways we can partner as a contract city. Um, to keep public safety at the forefront and as a priority.
Thank you. Um, and yeah, I just want to reiterate, uh, the state of the city. It was, uh, amazing to see folks there to support the city. Um, we don't have an exact count, but I think we set out chairs for about two hundred and it was a filled room. Um, and I'm just going to reiterate, it was really a testament to how accessible this whole council is. Um, online, in person, uh, at events, all the things, phone call, text, email. So we're, uh, completely accessible, uh, to any resident, um, that has, uh, a concern or praise for the city. Uh, and that's it for me. So we have a closed session. Item fourteen point one, liability claims pursuant to government code five four nine six one. Claimant Nathan Wilson, agency claimed against City of Riverbank. Uh, fourteen point two, conference of labor negotiators pursuant to government code five four nine five seven point six. Agency representative, city manager, Maricela H. Garcia, employee organizations, Riverbank miscellaneous employees. Uh, so we're going to join the closed session.
Okay, we have returned from closed session. Item fifteen point one report from closed session liability claims direction has been given to staff. Item fifteen point two I S S H item fourteen point two conference with labor negotiators. Direction has been given to staff. Our next meeting is April twenty second, twenty twenty five at six P M and this meeting is adjourned.
Okay guys.
Thank you.